Okay, good morning, everyone. This is our regular BOCC meeting for May 24th. Just welcome to those in the room, those that may be watching the live stream or the recording at a later date. Before we call the roll, I'd like to invite County Manager Sean Fletcher up to provide an invocation and lead us in the pledge. Sean?
Shall we pray? For the word of God is the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believes in the name of Jesus. Dear Lord Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together and assemble here in your presence. We ask that you continue to give this commission, vision, to serve the community. We ask that you also give them hearts like King David and wisdom like King Solomon, that they may make decisions that are in the best keeping of the citizens and community they serve. We also offer a special prayer for our veterans, as Memorial Day is just around the corner. And finally, Lord, we ask that you continue to protect and keep safe our first responders. In your holy name, we pray, amen. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All righty, the time is now 9:03. Amanda, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Thayer?
Here.
Commissioner Schroeder?
Here.
All righty, we have a quorum. First item of business we have is to approve the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes. I accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, first items of business we have are the items on consent. I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the items on consent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Just a note on the consent. We have added record of the minutes from the Noxious Weed Board. Those will be in the consent area for recognition for the second meeting on every month. So if we have citizens that want to kind of keep abreast of what's going on in that area, they'll be available publicly in the board packet for the second meeting going forward. Elected officials, department head staff reports. Do we have any elected officials that have a report to make? Okay. Seeing none, department heads? Tiffany, I believe you had just a quick update on where we are with the audit from last year.
Morning Commissioners, Tiffany Hermes, Finance Manager. Brief update on the audit. We are still working with our consultants to collect the data for our financial statements to be compiled. We did request an additional three weeks for field work before our auditors do come in. So that will push our deadline to about June 9th, and our auditors will be on site June 12th. Pushing this back for that field work could possibly put us in the realm of having to file an extension with the state to file our audit, but we are going to work very diligently with our auditors to get our audit done on time.
Appreciate that. I know, it's just, we finished late this past year.
Correct.
That pushed things back for this year, so having it right is more important than meeting.
We don't want to rush it.
That first deadline, so thank you. Any questions, comments?
No.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Do we have any other staff reports? Okay. Seeing none, I'll open now for citizen public comment. This is a period for folks that want to bring up an issue that isn't covered on the agenda. So I know we have quite a few people here for the patch liquor license that'll come up later, but we had some folks that were signed up for some other topics. And forgive me if I, I'll take them in the order they signed up, and then we'll go to the room if there's anybody that had any comments that didn't sign up. First we had was Debbie Ollum, growth in the housing assessment. Hello.
Good morning.
Morning.
Debbie Ollum, my address is 11195 Copper Springs, California. Your housing needs on there are pointed out as being 3,050 units over the next 10 years, with 1,900 of those being workforce household needs and senior housing. I'm not sure how they came to that number. If '20 and '21, they only show 733 permits, and that includes the municipality entries into that. So I guess I'm concerned as to why our rush is to approve these leapfrogging subdivisions, including EC West and EC East. We, that is the prime example of why we had the adjacency rule years ago. I will point out to you that in '99 and 2000, Elbert County did look at a moratorium. Our CDC department has gone through turnover like no other. Continuity does not exist. The residential numbers from 2000 to 2020 increased by 2,692. That would assume that we also had 4.6 vacant homes. Now, what about the remaining lots in Independence, Spring Valley, Moorestead, and EC West that all have formal applications in? You have 1,969 in your pipeline right now with formal applications. At 733 permits in two years, is that really a need to rush? I don't see that. The average sales price of a new build in Elbert County is $612,000. That's from your own report. Let's look at a metro district with a 1% addition on the mills. The lowest price home was $466,000. Then go look at the income that you have to have for that $466,000 home. $5,126 of it a year will be in nothing but mill levies and taxes. That's $424 a month for their metro district. Do you really think they can afford to do that? I will tell you that their payment would be $2,800 a month. By your own chart, that shows that has to be a four-person, moderate-income family with an income of $93,000 to $140,000. I'm not thinking that's going to take care of our teachers, our waitresses, our fire department. It's not going to do it. If we move forward, as the study shows, our shortage actually exists in the 200,000 to 400,000 price range with 800 units as the shortage. I would tell you that it actually shows in your own study, a surplus of 1,300 units in the 595,000-plus range. I am a Realtor. I will tell you, this is your study. I just don't see where we have to rush forward. I want you guys, I know you guys are doing a water study. I talked to Mark. You guys got an RFP out for it. That's great. It's past due. But I do want you to know, your strategic plan has not been updated. It was to be updated annually. It was 2018, guys. That's not appropriate. It's supposed to be, it's actually referred to as a living document protecting the rights of individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Diana Edstrom, I just...
Can I approach?
Yes.
Good morning, Diana Edstrom, 10243, Private Road 106. My comments are concerning Elbert County East, the public meeting that took place on 5/16. I had sent an email to the three commissioners last Thursday. I know you all are busy, haven't received a response yet, so I wanted to read my email, and we can go from there. Dear Commissioners, I am addressing this email to you as I do not see a director of CDS named on the Elbert County website. I certainly could have missed it. I am writing in regards to the Elbert County East Community Meeting, which took place on 5/16, as well as the notification process that preceded the meeting and next steps as outlined in the Elbert County zoning regulations. There are several concerns and questions. I have provided the relevant ECZR in support of these concerns, questions, and those are down in that same email further below. The pre-app meeting. At the community meeting, a member of the applicant staff, that being craft companies, stated that there had not been a pre-app meeting with CDS. Can you confirm if this is correct? If it is, then it seems that a community meeting was premature per the Elbert County zoning regulations. If a pre-app meeting was held, please provide the procedure as to how those meeting minutes, as well as all the meeting application documents, may be obtained, and why the applicant staff was unaware of that meeting. Community meeting notification. The applicant did not provide the required 14-day notice for the meeting. A citizen recognized this and contacted CDS, at which point the meeting had to be rescheduled. Who is responsible for ensuring the notification process is followed? Community meeting. In my understanding from folks that attended that meeting, there was no one there from CDS. I have provided the relevant passages from the ECZR documenting the fact that CDS will, and that's the word used, attend the meeting. Post-community meeting. What is the process for citizens to obtain copies of the sign-in sheets and meeting notes that the applicant is to provide to CDS? And again, the zoning regulations are quoted. It appears that Elbert County zoning regulations were not followed in the first two steps of the land use process. The attendance at the EC East Community Meeting was attended by about 75 to 100 citizens, and as I understand it, there was little support for this project. If the county and the developer move forward, it is critical that Elbert County zoning regulations be followed. Would you please address the questions, concerns I have documented, and advise how CDS will be following processes moving forward? Thank you for your attention. So, thank you.
Diana? Larry Gable?
Larry Gable, 33265 Wyndham Circle. Good morning, gentlemen. I want to thank you publicly for meeting with me a couple months ago to Gold River Metro Districts. As you know, I'm a opponent of metro districts. I think they're bad for the community and bad for the people involved. You know, we just had an election in Elizabeth, and two of the driving factors were the residents of Gold Creek. Many of them moved out here to escape the kind of development that they're living in, and some of them felt guilty that they're out here and now they don't want other people to come out here. But that was one of the proponents that drove them. The other proponent was the metro district. When a lot of them got their tax, property tax bills, 40% of their tax bill is paying back to metro district, the debt. And as Grant Thayer eloquently said when they approved Independence, buyer beware. It's hard to be aware of something you don't know about. And as I discussed with you, I think full disclosure, in my world, means giving them the numbers for the next 30 years on this looks like a mortgage, but it's disguised as a property tax, and people can't escape it. So I'm encouraging you going forward, that if these developers want to come and develop, that they're not allowed to use metro districts, and you're the only ones that can approve it. The state doesn't say you have to. There is no law that says you have to, to my knowledge. So make them build without a metro district, and I guarantee they will go away. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Larry. Next one, I apologize, I can't read the name, but the topic was kicking the teeth. Oh.
Good morning, Robert Politik, 34006, County Road 73. So, the reason for the kick in the teeth. This is a combination of the current Excel Pathway Project, along with the recent mailing of our property tax assessed values. And what I find interesting, and on the behalf of those who will be affected by the transmission line, or potentially affected by the transmission line, is the simple fact that, on average, from, you know, what I'm gathering from people in and around the community, the assessed value from last year to this year is averaging 20, or 22% higher than it was. And obviously, for those who will be impacted by the transmission line, their value is actually going down. And so to me, that's just a kick in the teeth for those particular landowners to have to succumb to an increase in their tax base when actually their land values are going down based upon the impact of a transmission line through their property. Not only is the value of their land going down, but it's going to be next to impossible if and when they want to sell their own property. And so to me, that's a kick in the teeth coming back from the county. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Carrie Gibb, Carrie? Thanks.
Good morning, Carrie Gibblett, 19656, Wiedemeyer Road. Thank you for hearing us out again this morning. As you know, I've been traveling for well over a month and out of the country, so I have a lot to catch up on, and it sounds like there's a lot that's been going on. I read the minutes from the May 10th Commissioner meeting, and it says that Community and Economic Development Director Mark Detton Reader explained that there has not been a pre-application meeting yet for Excel, sorry, but that there was a meeting regarding the 1041 predetermination. And I wondered if...
That was actually for a core IREA project?
Oh, okay, so that was not Excel then?
Yeah, just, yes.
Got you, okay. It was in the public comments along with Excel, so I assumed...
Right, that was clarified after, that was stated in the meeting, but was an error.
All right, well, good. Thank you for explaining that, because I was going to ask what that was about. And then yesterday, I spent my time at the El Paso County Commissioner meeting, because I have nothing better to do, you know? And they had a work session after their meeting to discuss the Excel's Colorado Power Pathway Project. It says that the project has not yet been submitted to the Planning and Community Development Department to date, but their commissioners invited Excel to come to talk to them about the project and to give them opportunity to ask questions. They couldn't make comment, obviously, but they're waiting for it to be submitted to Planning and Community Development Department. So I'm wondering, after seeing their process, kind of what the process will be here? Is something similar going to take place here, where Excel will submit to the planning department? Do we need to be meeting with the planning department? Will there be a work session before all of this happens? So I would just like a little clarification on the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Ann Hewer? I appreciate, apologize if I got that wrong.
Don't worry, everybody does. Hi, my name is Lisa Ann Hewel, at 34221 Forest Park Drive. And gentlemen, thank you for allowing us to speak today, and thank you for being here. I'm here to echo the comments previously made by Debbie, Diana, and Larry about the concern we have with the growth and overdevelopment that we're seeing in our beautiful county here in Elbert. I think there is a lesson to be learned by what has just recently happened in Elizabeth. We had an election, as you guys know, about the development. We call it Elizabeth West. That seems to be a theme here, you know, Elbert County West, Elbert County East, Elizabeth East, Elizabeth West. The citizens, we were successful in creating a petition and taking the decision from the board and giving it to the people. It was the only initiative on the ballot. There was nothing else to bring people out. It was the largest election that drew people out of Elizabeth to vote. 73% of the electorate voted down the Elizabeth West development. Now, we realize that is only going to be a pause, that something is going to happen with that land, but what we're asking is for people to respectfully consider what the people are telling you. We are not an anti-growth community. We welcome people into our neighborhood, and Larry, sorry, you're going to hear this for the 30th time, but you are welcome to join our community, just don't take over our community. We want a rural lifestyle. We moved here for the rural lifestyle. We're tired of people telling us how beautiful it is. They moved from the city to come out here, and they want all the conveniences of the city. Well, then, why did you leave the city to begin with? If you want to create Parker and Castle Rock, then we respectfully request that you move to Parker and Castle Rock. We move out here to have our children have space. They want to join FAA, or they want to join, or FFA, sorry, 4H. They want their 4H projects. They want their goats, their chickens, their cows. And with these developments that you're proposing, or that are being proposed, they don't have that opportunity. This high-density development is destroying, in my opinion, Elbert County and the beauty that it holds. So I think if we looked carefully at, as Debbie had pointed out, we know that there's a water study that's going to be happening, we would respectfully request at least a pause. Everybody slow down, let's just see where this takes us. You know, based on the numbers that we heard earlier from Debbie, we have an oversupply. I will tell you, Legacy, we just heard a report from our Board of Trustee meeting yesterday, Legacy still has open lots. I think that they're only 40% sold. So there's plenty of room in Elbert County for homes that are already being developed in Legacy, in addition to everything else, all the other numbers that Debbie has brought up. So we're just respectfully asking, you know, could we slow down? Could we take a deep breath and look to see what's actually happening, and what does the county want for all of us? So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe everybody else that signed up was to speak on the patch liquor license. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to make comment on any other topic other than that? Okay. And Amanda, I don't believe we had anybody that wanted to be called or sent email comment?
No, we didn't.
Okay, thank you. Would that close public comment at this time, and just take a few moments to respond to some of what we heard? This isn't, again, for public comment. We're not going to get deep into trying to figure out what the answers to the issues are, but I just want to make sure that, you know, you have been heard and give some of the answers that we can. I would, I'll start with the easier one, Carrie. Our process for large projects, as part of the pre-application process, there are community meetings, as that was discussed in terms of, I guess, EC West, but we also have what are called concept briefings for the commissioners, essentially held in a workshop. It's like a community meeting for us, and we try to get those brought forward to us after a community meeting has been done. So we know what our citizens have been thinking as well, and have our opportunity to ask some questions of the applicant before their application is finished or completed for submission, and an opportunity for us to perhaps steer a little. And obviously, we've been trying to steer this one from the beginning, but I believe we're still in the same place we were. There's no pre-app meeting has been held, and I don't believe, from what I'd heard this morning, that there's even been any contact to schedule a pre-application meeting. So I hope you enjoyed your travels, because in that respect, nothing changed while you were gone. Yeah, yeah. To the housing plan, Debbie, I agree with everything you said. Those, that's been one of those things, or there are needs and wants. The county has needs in the lower range, lesser expensive housing. More broadly, to the community meeting or projects that have been proposed, we hear a lot that we've approved all sorts of things that we haven't even seen applications on. I'll hearken back to the tiny, the tiny home community from several years ago, where everybody was sure this was coming, and this was going to be horrible, and we never received an application, because in that case, it wasn't even a feasible project to start with. That was kind of recognizable, but it was, I don't know, the hope and dream of that potential applicant, that it'd become a viable project. And it, you know, as they explored it, and as they worked through, had a community meeting, got feedback eventually for, you know, am I right of reasons? That project never went forward, but it was a decision on behalf of, or it was a decision made by the potential applicant. It wasn't a refusal, but I know there was a lot of buzz in the community that was coming, and nothing was going to stop it. So not everything that gets applied for happens. I know there's an application in process, so there's not an awful lot we can say in terms of the EC East or EC West, other than we recognize the numbers that are there, as well as location, and I think there's, you know, lots of issues surrounding that that rightfully raise concerns. We'll ask staff to take a look at the questions, Diana, that you had. If that community meeting was held as a community meeting as part of a pre-application process, and it wasn't noticed properly, then that's something to dig into. If it was a community meeting that was just held, because anybody can hold a community meeting, the Ag Alliance has held many meetings for the community and invited people. I honestly, from the side of the table, can't tell you where we're at as commissioners. We tend to, we sit back and listen and watch until an application comes to fruition, so... Larry, I do appreciate the time you spent with us a couple of weeks ago. Larry, you spent a little time with each of us to kind of walk through numbers on metro districts, and there's some good food for thought there. I was going to say, there's lots we need to work on, I think, together in terms of the vision of the county. I would also offer that this is, I mean, there's, there are some changing neighborhoods, smaller areas in the communities, but we are a very big county. I actually took meetings in Kit Carson and Lincoln County yesterday, and had the opportunity for the first time in a long time to drive the length of the county when it was green. There is a lot of county, and there's a lot of rural out there. We are seeing growth pressure, not personal pressure on us, it's just the nature of the growing metro area and jobs. When the county first started growing in the 90s in the northwest corner, it was kind of a response to those that wanted to live out this way, and it was easily commutable to the tech center. You know, we've seen Parker grow, we've seen Castle Rock grow, we've seen new communities spring up. Our county becomes more commutable to the jobs that are in those locations. So we become a viable place for people that want to live and commute to live. So it's understandable that... So it's understandable that people look at Elbert County. So that's the driver. I mean, people aren't just showing up here because it's, you know, randomly. It's really the growth in jobs that have been coming closer to Elbert County, but probably better town hall type discussions. I won't go on with this, but I would ask if fellow commissioners have anything to say.
Yeah. In fact, as I had two people come into my office this morning before this meeting saying that we'd already approved, one said 5,000 homes and one said 5,500 homes, so I'm not sure what the right number is. Be that as it may, these community meetings have no legal thing except for gathering information. Each of those three subdevelopments that are talked about, and notice I didn't say approved, they're talked about, we don't even have an application in. And I think, and I'll defer to Mark here, but I don't even think that they've had a pre-app meeting. And with this, I'm talking about Moorestead, EC East, and EC West. And each one of them, if the rumors are right, would be significant, but there are long ways from an application that would be even analyzed. For example, each application, when they have the pre-app meeting, which they haven't had yet, they will be given some instruction about what they need to do with respect to referrals. They haven't even gone down that pathway yet. And usually, when you send out referrals, fire department and roads and all these kind of things, there's quite a delay in times before the studies are completed or the, and I'll give you an example, like the fire department in whatever fire district they are in will require certain things like spray nozzles and the different volumes of water being available for, and all of that stuff has to be satisfied before our planning department will really accept a formal approval. So my guess is, and notice I didn't say I know because I haven't seen the details, my guess is that even if they filed for scheduling a pre-application in the morning, we're still a year out. And that's a year out before we even have stuff to sit down and truly analyze. And for me, being an engineer, that comes out, I want to see the data so I can kind of figure out reality. Now, one of the things that I, I'm not sure who mentioned it, is the amount of, well, I'm going to use the word market absorption. For example, Spring Valley Ranch was approved well over 20 years ago for 1,781 or 82 lots. Less than a third of those have been permitted yet. So there's lots of things, and again, one of the things that if we, they bring it to us to approve, we're going to want to see the technology for the sewer plant. How are they going to handle those kind of things? Water, where are they going to use it? And like Independence, we made them have a, what I call a purple water system, where they could only use water that come from their sewer facilities for irrigation. They couldn't use it in a house. There's, and I'm starting to talk too much, but there's lots of layers of things that we've got to do yet. And the one thing that's common about every comment here, XL, EC West, EC East, and Moorestead, we still haven't had a pre-application meeting for any of those. So for us to look you in the eye and say that these type of things have been approved, it would be living in fantasy land. There's a lot of work to be done, and it's going to be orchestrated by our planning department. Mark Deaton Rider is the leader there, and we'll have to see how these things come down. Things like a traffic study, that's a lot of work, a lot of time, and we can't approve something unless we have the underlying data. I apologize for talking so much.
I echo everything that the guys here have said, but just as far as your comments on the assessed value, those are difficult when prices are going up because we're looking, the look back goes back to June of 30th, the market value at that time, and they really can't take into effect a potential impact. It has to be at the market value at that time. So I understand the frustration, but the assessor's office and everything, they've got their rules they have to follow with that, too. So we're aware of it. Countywide, it's about a 35% increase, so we're looking at different options that we have. We have invited the other 51 taxing districts in the county to a meeting on June 21st to discuss, see if there's some options we can do, work together to help alleviate that. But we're sensitive to that.
One thing I did want to add as well, when you're, I guess, in terms of the larger developers, I'm not, I won't defend them, that's their business, but everything kind of runs on economic cycles. Grant had mentioned that Spring Valley was approved in 2000. Independence was entitled in 2008 as, under the name of Bandera. Gold Creek subdivision was entitled by the town at about the same time as, under the name of Rotaro, and then we went into a recession. We came out of the recession and the time to build appeared, so these entitlements that have been granted almost a decade before, or well, not quite a decade before, became active. And I do believe that what we're seeing now is developers that are recognizing that, you know, the economy's in a shaky place and they're looking for entitlements, probably not to build right now, but to have those in place when we come out of whatever the downturn that we might see is. That doesn't mean that they should be approved. I'm just saying that if you want to look at what they're doing and why, is they're trying to, you know, I guess, make hay while the sun shines. The only reason Spring Valley is still a viable project is because that developer held on through several cycles and, you know, has a very low basis because he, you know, he bought that land a long time ago and has slowly developed it, so... But like I said, there's a lot of reasons why people pursue things, there's a lot of reasons why people abandon projects, so... But as Grant said, until we have applications, a lot of it is theoretical, a lot of it is exploratory. Ideally, the community meetings, when they're held, and ideally, they're held properly and noticed properly, but the purpose of those community meetings, in the best sense, is for the applicant to hear from the community. What are they, and I hear the scoffing, but that is the purpose, whether they use it for that purpose, and that has to be considered as well. But the community, you know, ideally, a good developer, you know, wants to have a good project and he wants to be acceptable to the communities moving into, so they should be listening to people and they should be modifying their plans if they aren't acceptable or they may move on if they feel that they will never be acceptable. But with that, I'll close our public comment, but I can't tell you the date off the top of my head, but I think we should be coming up in either this coming month or July will be our next Commissioner Town Hall, and I think we'll try to focus that around growth, water, and these issues, so we can actually have a little freer discussion separate from actual applications. But appreciate all the input today. Thank you. With that, we have no discussion items on the schedule, but we've done a lot of discussing, so that's good. Moving on to action items, the first item we have is consideration of our minutes from the May 10th meeting. I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the May 10th, 2023 minutes as written and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from the May 10th meeting and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Next, we have consideration of minutes from a special meeting held on May 17th. I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes from May 17th, special meeting on May 17th, 2023, and dispense with those, reading of those minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from May 17th and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have a, this is going to be held as a public hearing to consider the Elbert Town Committee's special event permit. I would accept a motion to open public hearing on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open public hearing on Elbert Town Committee's special event permit.
All righty, we have a motion to open public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to open public hearing on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay, this is a relatively simple.
Due to my relationship with the applicant, personally, oh, this is the other one, my fault. I don't know the Elbert Town.
Relationship with an entire unincorporated town.
I crossed it off already.
Nope, you've got to stay for this. Okay.
Okay, so...
And we've got two liquor licenses we're hearing today. The process is generally the same for both. We open public hearing, we'll get brief input from the staff if the applicant has information to present, we'll take that as well. We'll ask for public comment. We may have questions for staff or applicant after that, and then we'll close for, make a determination, so... With that, Amanda, could you present on behalf of the town of Elbert?
Sure. Yeah. So we received an application for a special event permit from the Elbert Town Committee for the event, Elbert Days. That's going to take place on July 8th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. This is an annual event, and so no changes have been made. Our applicant couldn't be with us today. And just a note in your packet, you, I did not have the liability insurance in there, but I have received it. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Going to ask about insurance, but any questions for Amanda at this time? Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any, I guess, probably still don't have any questions for staff?
I don't have any.
Okay, all righty, so I'd accept a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Elbert Town Committee's special event permit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the special event permit for the Elbert Town Committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'd accept a motion to close public hearing on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing on Elizabeth Town Committee's special event permit.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second to close. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, okay, that public hearing is closed. Now, before we move on to the public hearing for the Patch, I believe Commissioner Schroeder had a statement.
He jumped the gun there last time. Yeah, as previously stated, I have a personal relationship with the applicant, and it's probably best for all parties involved for me to recuse me, myself, from this application.
Thank you for recognizing that. I'd ask you to depart. We'll call a brief recess. I know we've got some AV equipment to set up that can kind of break in place. It should only be a few moments, a few minutes. All righty, the next item we have up is a, again, this will be done in public hearing. It's a request for a new liquor license for the Patch in Elizabeth. I would accept a motion to open public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open the public hearing for the new liquor license for the Patch in Elizabeth.
All second. We have a motion and a second to open public hearing on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're in public hearing. Okay, this will probably be a little lengthier, but same process. We'll ask the staff to kind of present the background on the license. We'll invite the applicant or their representative to present. We may have questions throughout that. There will open public comment. We'll invite staff and applicant to respond to public comment, and at that point, we'll render a decision, so... Amanda, if you could kind of set the framework for this?
Thank you. We are here because we received an application for a new liquor license. It would be a lodging and entertainment liquor license for the Patch in Elizabeth. It's a seasonal business located at 39980 Foxtrot Circle in Elizabeth, and the Smiths, Dustin and Catherine are the applicants. Through the application process, we did receive a background check. It was completed and there's no concerns. Public notice was posted on the property and in the ranchland for the hearing that was originally scheduled in April. Liquor Pros completed a petition of the surrounding area. I believe their area was a half mile away from the location, and they also went into the town limits of Elizabeth and did some local businesses and stuff just to see what the support would be, as they also have liquor licenses. I was told that the applicants do plan on moving locations for next year, but I don't have more information on that. That would be something that you would need to ask the applicants. And we have, Ms. Ford is, there's information in our packet. It was public comment that we included in the packet, and she will be presenting for multiple neighbors of the area.
Okay, and thank you, Amanda. You had mentioned it and I overlooked it when we opened, we were reopening a hearing. This had been originally posted and scheduled for our meeting two weeks ago.
April 12th.
We opened and continued on April 12th to this date. And then, if you could, Amanda, just briefly, it's, I know it's titled a lodging and entertainment liquor license. No lodging is contemplated.
Correct. It would be...
Type of license.
It's the type of license that kind of encompasses both types of things, but this would be for entertainment, not lodging.
Okay, thank you. So any questions for staff?
No, I'd like to hear the applicant.
Okay, with that, I'd invite the applicant's rep to present.
All right, can you hear me this time? Awesome. All right, my name's Rebecca Spence. I'm an attorney for the Patch in Elizabeth LLC. My bar number is 54030. As Amanda mentioned, this is going to be an application for a lodging and entertainment liquor license at 39980 Foxtrot Circle. I have Dusty and Kathy Smith here with me today. They're the owners and managers of the Patch. This is a seasonal pumpkin patch operation. They're open between September 23rd and October 29th, on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, and one Thursday. The Friday hours of operation are 10:00 to 3:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, they're open from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And we have an arrangement set up with Elizabeth Brewing Company, another local business. We're going to be purchasing the alcohol from EBC, and we also happen to be hiring their staff to serve the alcohol. This is going to be a traditional purchase-sale agreement under the liquor code, where we purchase alcohol, we purchase kegs, bottles, whatever the applicant decides upon under the liquor code, and then we'll be leaving the alcohol at the premises. Whenever EBC staff leaves, that alcohol will be stored in a locked shed or locked area that's not accessible to... in a locked shed or locked area that's not accessible to minors, the public, or anybody else except for the managers and owners, Dusty and Kathy. And so Amanda talked a little bit about polling results and petitioning, and I just wanted to dive into that just briefly here. As she mentioned, we petitioned individuals in the area, and by we, I mean liquor pros, petitioned individuals in the area, and we found that there was seventy-six percent in favor of this license. When we moved over to businesses, polling results were ninety-one percent in favor. And so, as you can see, results of the petition are extremely favorable here. And in support of granting this license, there were only a few parties on the petition itself that expressed opposition. And so, when we look at the polling results and reason behind these no votes, none of those reasons that arose expressed concerns related specifically to liquor or alcohol sales. And I did just want to remind the board, or alert the board of the nineteen seventy Supreme Court case, Mobel v. Meyer, and I have that case here if, that would be helpful for the board to review as well. But essentially, in this case, the Supreme Court of Colorado found that traffic and parking concerns were insufficient reasons to support denial of a license. Additionally, the court states that supporting denial of a license for speculative reasons, such as possible noise, possible disturbances, is without good cause. And so, unless we evaluate data specifically related to the addition of a liquor license here at the patch, the Supreme Court's guidance here in Mobel states that everything else is speculative and should not be considered in denial of a license. Amanda mentioned that there were cited reasons for no votes on the petition, and if, if you go through a couple of those, I'll, I'll throw a few out. I believe that they're all speculative, and roads not adequate, disturbing the neighborhood, traffic, speed, children, animals on the road. These concerns cited, and I suspect many of the concerns that we'll hear today are speculative in nature. And the petition has otherwise shown overwhelming support for granting this license. This is a seasonal small business owner working to boost the economy of the area by hiring other local businesses to be involved with the patch. They're keeping it local. I'd love to either answer some questions from the board, or if I could, turn it over to Dusty here to talk a little bit more about the concepts and internal policies that they have put in place.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Spencer?
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
So my name is Dustin Smith. I reside at three nine nine eight zero Foxtrot Circle in Elizabeth, Colorado, and I'm the owner and manager of the patch. Both my wife and I grew up going to our grandpa's farm, mine in northwest Arkansas, my wife's in southeast Kansas. And as our kids grew up, my folks lived in town, and they didn't have a grandpa's farm. So it was one of the farms called Bishop's Pumpkin Patch in Sacramento, put it. We are the grandpa's farm for those people in the Denver metro who don't have one. So we consider ourselves caretaker of that. So when you look at the developments that are coming in in Elizabeth, we are trying to keep it agricultural. How do we share the agriculture story and the history with those who no longer have it? My day job is actually in healthcare, and you may wonder how I made the jump from healthcare to a farmer. I've spent the last, well, most of my professional life, running around the country, helping health systems to answer their clinical questions, so that we can send grandma and grandpa and little, you know, Johnny and Jenny, home to their parents. So I've had coworkers whose kids have had brain tumors. I've had coworkers who kids have had leukemia. I've had coworkers whose spouse has passed from cancer when their kids were little. None of them said we wish we'd watched more TV with them. So we are very much in the memories business. We wanted to provide an activity that families could do together and friends could do together, and it's how they'll remember their family members and friends for the rest of their lives. And I'll pause there on why. A brief history is, you guys know, we've actually worked with Elbert County through the agricultural residential right to use since when we started. Later, that became an agricultural residential temporary use permit that the county clerk, the office of emergency management, Elizabeth Fire, Public Health, Public Works, and the sheriff's office all sign off on each year that we're open under the sixty calendar days. This year, I believe it's actually eighteen days that we will be open. As has been mentioned, we are planning in a purchased land off of eighty-six, just between here and Elizabeth, just west of County Route Thirty-Three, and we're working with Mark and his team on that process to move our business over to that area there. You guys have mentioned the length of time involved with some of the pre-application and application. I can confirm it's a long and thorough process. I don't mean long negatively. It's just a thorough process, and we are going through that process with the county. All right. So I, I do want to point out, as odd as this may sound, my wife and I actually don't drink alcohol. Her father, I'll say it this way, was a homeless alcoholic. Okay? We don't drink. I don't think it's wrong. I don't think it's wrong for you to have a beer. I don't think it's, it's just for her and respect for her and what she grew up with. We don't do it. We've connected with a number of farms, both locally and around the country, who have opted to serve alcohol, whether it's a hard cider, a craft beer, a wine slushy, something like that, and understood our concerns. Like I said, this is our six, we've been open for six years. This is our seventh, and have convinced us that it's not the concern that we felt like it could be. So we reviewed the liquor code. We've put together internal training for our staff. We worked with Elizabeth Brewing Company on this. Both our staff and theirs, their staff is already what they call TIPS trained, which is referred to as responsible vendor training. Elizabeth Brewing Company is extremely excited to work with us. They are also the group that puts together Friday nights in Elizabeth with some live music. I believe they have some fair local businesses as well and serve alcohol there. Our internal policies that we will reinforce, both through our onboarding process and with Elizabeth Brewing Company, is we will card every person, regardless of age or appearance. We will only serve one drink per ID. So if I wanted to buy a drink for both my wife and I, I would not be able to do that. She would need to come and purchase her own drink and show her own ID. We will not allow vertical IDs. Any signs of intoxication, such as sird speech, slurred speech, in coordination, the smell of alcohol, aggression, or involuntary eye movement, et cetera, will not be served. So obviously, we will not serve anyone who we believe to be intoxicated. We are aware of the administrative penalties for the patch upon the liquor code violations, and we will make our staff aware of criminal penalties and individual, for individuals also, upon a liquor code violation. Our staff does monitor the entire premise. We have always done that regardless of if we've served alcohol or not. We are considering and will likely do wristbands. So once you receive an ID to, to purchase a drink, you'll be given a different colored wristband depending on the day, and then that will alert the staff to who is allowed to have a drink and who is not. So the containers will be a different color and identifiable by all staff, and that's how we plan on monitoring who should and should not have a drink. There's one entry and one exit that is also monitored, and they will clearly have signs that state that no alcohol is available beyond this point. When we look at why do we want to do this, I mentioned other farms around the country. There are others in the Denver area, including Douglas County, that also have a liquor license to sell these kind of beverages on their farms, including Lone Creek Farms, just down the street off of Parker Road. Goodness. My kids were surprised, and actually, most of the kids who work at concession stand were surprised how often we get asked. I would say it's multiple times per hour. We get asked if we have some type of alcohol to serve. We've talked with people in the community. I would say, like, hey, we run the patch. I met a gentleman. I picked up some garden boxes a couple of weeks ago, and he's like, yeah, my wife takes the kids. I was like, oh, well, we're looking at doing a liquor license and having a hard cider. He was like, oh, well, I'll have to come and check it out. So we know that there's demand in the area for it. Again, we're big on helping other small businesses, Elizabeth Brewing Company. We also work with, I can't remember the total number, if it's seven or ten, such as The Nest. We sell their items in our general store. So we do partner with other small businesses to help them expand their business as well. As far as the health of the community, obviously, we're looking at ways to encourage people to stay longer. We're on thirty-five acres now. The new property is just over a hundred. Plenty of space to walk around, get more exercise, spend more time outside, and playing with your friends and family. In terms of the morals of the community, whether it's neighborhoods, getting together for a cookout with a beer, meeting coworkers for a drink after work, it is part of socializing in America. And I mentioned that, I'll kind of close with this little story. And it's, it goes back to why we do what we do. My daughter's best friend stayed with us for weekends, her senior year, and helped us at the patch. Her family came down from Brighton to spend the day with us. Had a great time. You know, that's what most people think of. About a month after that, Riley's older sister committed suicide. When my daughter went to the funeral, they put her, pulled her aside and said, your family's pumpkin patch was the last thing we did. And that's how we choose to remember our daughter. That's why we do what we do. And if we can get more families there, that's, that's why we do it. So we kindly ask you guys to consider our license and to approve the liquor license for the patch.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the applicant?
No, I'd say the public comment.
Okay. Sir, if I could, I had just a question before we asked for public comment.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm curious, since you are, this is your last year at this location, and you're planning to move to a new location, and we heard that you would be then asking to transfer the license. Is just the reason for making the application now versus in conjunction?
First waiting another year?
Yeah.
I'll say the demand for it has been such that it warrants doing it. Elizabeth Brewing Company is extremely excited to partner with us on it. It's a way that, again, it's, our customers would like us to do it, and the local community and the business sense is telling us that they would like us to do it also. So that's why.
And you anticipate an increase in, in volume of business if you're offering this?
Yeah, we do expect an increase in sales in terms of the alcohol sales. It's hard to pinpoint that, what that would be, but it's, it would be more than what we're spending in terms of the license and the process, and we understand that we will need to redo somewhere around eighty to ninety percent of the license next year when we move.
Okay, thank you.
We had actually considered it last year and postponed it, and just didn't feel it was worth postponing again.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Alrighty, so at this point, I guess we will ask for public comment. So I know there was a, the slides are up, but there was a, a group of citizens that chose one representative to speak for them. I would, I think what we'll do is start with that, and if there are individuals that weren't represented that would like to, to speak, we'll call them forward. So if, so if we could start with, thank you, ma'am. And I know, if, if you could, your name for the record, and then who you're representing would be useful.
Yeah, actually, so my name's Amy Ford. I own the property right next to the patch. It's located at three nine seven oh two Foxtrot Circle.
I apologize. I don't hear very well. Can you say Amy?
Sure, it's Amy Ford.
And then just for those that are perhaps remote.
If you misspell that, you're in trouble.
Yeah. And then, Grant, for those that are watching online or might be reviewing, if you can use the mic, because then they won't be able to hear.
I agree. I asked the lady that before us, repeat her name.
All right, thank you for having me here today. I am representing a group of homeowners along Foxtrot, Lone Elk Circle, and Pronghorn Avenue. Next slide, please. So my agenda here today is going to be real quick. It's who are we, because we have a unique perspective. The pros that their current state that they're in, because they will imply issues with alcohol once you bring them on board. Liability issues, we'll cover those in detail. And then, our Foxtrot, Foxtrot Ale Farms covenants. There's some language in there specifically that I want you to hear, and as well as what happens to property values. Next slide, please. So every one of these individuals here, Longhorn, or Lone Elk Circle, Pronghorn, Foxtrot Bart is actually going to speak on his own, so we'll take his name off of that. Next slide? Okay, so thank you for the maps feature on the Elbert County website. I did use it here to pull up this map. So one of the key things I wanted to highlight here is the purple. The purple is all private roads. There is no county maintenance on them. The yellow diamonds represent the entrances to the properties. And finally, the pushpins, the red pushpins represent the property owners that use Pronghorn on a daily basis, obviously to Lone Elk and Foxtrot Circle. Next slide, please. So I went ahead and removed all that clutter, because these are the guys that all of us here live along this road, and we all oppose this liquor license, and we'll get into the reasons why. Okay, so let's talk about our roads. So these are definitely private roads. They are not county maintained. We chose in the early two thousands not to move them over to the county. There was specific reasons on that, but we had a homeowners' meeting, and we said, nope, we want to keep them in our control. There are some hidden dangers on a road that a purple line on a map will not show. We also do want to talk about the patch's traffic, because once you understand what you're going to add alcohol to, that might make a difference. The road damage. So realize, when the patch operates, within a couple of weeks, that road is now washboardy. So we'll take a look at the damage of the road after the patch's business. Thank you. So the roads were constructed to support eleven residences and no more. There's no county maintenance at all whatsoever. It's left up to the homeowners to take care of these roads. They are definitely not up to county standards. I can tell you that. We maintain them to the level of traffic that we have had for the eleven residences, but like Foxtrot has barely any road base on it left. So then on the hidden dangers, there's quite a few here. We've got two hidden curves at the very beginning of Pronghorn, two blind hills on Pronghorn, a steep hill, as well as a hidden corner, which I personally have been had multiple times where people have almost hit my car within a foot, because you can't see people coming out on Foxtrot. And then on Foxtrot Circle, just leading down into the patch is a blind hill. You cannot see down below. Next slide, please. So the patrons of the patch, they typically come from suburbia. They're used to paved roads. They're not used to the washboardy roads. And again, within two weeks, those are, roads are, after their business of two weeks, they're very washboardy. And then we'll talk a little bit more about the And then, we'll talk a little bit more about the severe increased traffic, because we do have some traffic counts, as well as the dangerous drivers on the road already. Next slide. So, in spring of 2021, the homeowners got together because we knew we needed some help on the road. It was brought up that we thought that Dusty and Mrs. Smith needed to provide more financial assistance because of the traffic they're bringing on the road. At that point in time, Dusty said, nope, it's not us, it's not our traffic, it's the weather, which we haven't been having, or it's how you're taking care of the road, which has been perfectly fine up until their business started. So, one of our homeowners purchased a Pico count, 2500, it's an advanced counter, it's one that's used by the county. We got 84 days in there, and you'll notice our traffic went from 6% all the way up to 94% of being caused by the patch's traffic. And this was all agreed upon with the homeowners, including the Smiths. So, let's talk about speeds. These counters that we had were placed very close to the entrance of the patch, so it would give us an idea of what traffic was going to the patch, and we had some additional ones over off of Pronghorn. So, you're capturing one-way traffic speeds, and literally, we had somebody go on between 50 and 54 miles an hour on our dirt road, that's washboardy. Next slide. So, here are some of the pictures of the damage of the road. It was graded right before it. Next slide, another picture. Next one. Next one. So, you can see these roads are severely damaged, where they take most of their patronage is towards the end of their season. So, what you're, they're asking for is to add liquor to the highest speeds of traffic which have been counted, these are not speculative in any mean, shape, or form, these are from something that, the counters that are used by counties and cities. Next slide. So, with them being private roads, we were liable. Those homeowners that all oppose this liquor license are liable if there's an accident on that road. Would you want to have that liability? I don't. Defense is expensive in a lawsuit, right? Even if you win, it's still darn expensive. Loss of time, when you're going through a lawsuit, you have to spend a lot of time on that. And then, obviously, the fear and stress that comes with a lawsuit. None of us want that, period. Next slide. So, next up is, I want to talk about our covenants for Foxtail Farms. Yes, the patch is located in Foxtail Farms subdivision. These covenants pass with ownership, so from one owner to the next, they were filed, required by the county and filed on December 9th of 1997, and they prohibit business use. Let's go to the next slide, because this is a snippet. You do have a full copy of the covenants as a whole, so you can tell that I did not doctor this in any way, shape, or form, but to be very clear, business uses, this is in Article 5, Item Q, no commercial business of any kind shall be permitted in Foxtail Farms. Very clear what they are doing is against the covenants. Next slide. So, we all know that the patch, we have to, when we go to sell our homes, we have to notify everybody that they operate down there, so that's already decreased our values. One of the ladies that sold to the Rydells lost contracts because of their business. The noise is deafening with the, the road traffic, it's very dusty, arsenic, asbestos, there are a lot of heavy metals in that dust, and we're now breathing it because of all the dust that gets kicked up. So, that's what they're asking the alcohol to be served during that time, and if that happens, we now have to report when we do a sale of our properties that there's alcohol being served next door. So, in summary, those of us that are the most impacted are absolutely opposed to the allowance of liquor. We already have hazardous roads, after a couple of weeks, they're bumpy, washboardy, there's no getting around it. Liability issues, none of us wants that liability issue. I mean, would you want it, and you're not, I mean, it's just, there it is, there's liability issues. Our covenants specifically say no to commercial activity. So, alcohol, selling it, that's commercial. And then, obviously, the decrease in property values. I did put in a couple of videos, because the videos are going to the patch and going away from the patch, I highly recommend you look at that, because it really does describe the roads that we have today. They're not linear, they're not straight, you know, Pronghorn is long, I wish we had speed counts on that, because it's much longer than Foxtrot, that would have been worse than one of the traffic counts that we got. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And do we have any individuals that wish to speak? Ma'am?
I might need security after this to escort me out. Again, my name is Lisa Ann Huel, I live at 34221 Forest Park Drive in Elizabeth. So, I do not want to upset anybody here. I do not live in close proximity to the pumpkin patch, however, I do live not far from the pumpkin patch. We go to the pumpkin patch every year. There's a large group of us that always go, and none of us have children. A little personal history about me is I've been hit by three drunk drivers. I've never had a drop of alcohol in my life, went through seven years of college, it's got to be a record somewhere. I, I will say, when, when I see the slide, it is compelling information, but if you put it in, in, in perspective, I did the math, it's 57 days a year, it's less than 15% of the days that are available in a calendar year. As I own my own business as well, your chance or your opportunity to make revenue, especially in their situation, given that it's a pumpkin patch, is a very small window of opportunity. All the data that has been presented so far is stuff that they currently deal with now, that they've dealt with for the last five or six, seven years, the roads, the liability, the number of people, they've allowed, if it's against the covenants, they've allowed this business to exist for a while now, and still allow it to exist. I, I, what I, 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 the one thing that makes me feel a little better about the situation being in my community is that it's one drink. I know a lot of people are going to say, there's kids that go to this event, there's kids at every football game, the circus serves alcohol, the baseball games, the hockey games, there, there's going to be alcohol there, I think there is a way to do it responsibly, and they've shown that they're hiring staff that know how to look for this, they may not know how to look for someone who's drinking, or who's drinking or under the influence. I, as a business owner, I understand you have to make hay when you can, and that's a very appropriate, by the way, analogy for this. They're just asking for one year, they're moving their property in a year, they've explained that they're moving the property. I don't think it's too cumbersome to ask the community to support this one event for a neighbor that is only there for 57 days, and I'm being told, and I'm going to bring it up, even though, I know that was mentioned, that the, the road condition after the patch, I don't know how many people are going to, you know, all of a sudden, it's going to get out, hey, there's alcohol at the patch, and so there's going to be this huge influx of people, there's always a big influx of people, they don't have to do this for the community. I have asked, and they do this out of, out of the love for the community, they did spend $35,000 repaving the road, or re, reconditioning the road after the pumpkin patch, so there were road, road improvements made after the traffic.
Three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, in the back, you had your hand up next, yes?
My name is Bart McTaggart, thank you for allowing me to speak. I had a whole speech written, but I think I need to veer off that for a little bit.
And before you do, sir, could we get your address?
39600 Foxtrot Circle, and I'm one property over from them. So, we're the one, we deal with this, and I did a lot of the road maintenance in, in the community. And to say that we allowed this to happen, we fought against this from the get-go. We actually have issues with them operating, we've always had issues with them operating, and about the process for temporary use and all the other things. But when you see over 3,000% increase in traffic in a short period of time on a road, on a dirt road, that then you see actual parts falling off of cars, you see cigarette butts thrown out and dumped on the road, when you see all this other trash, it becomes a safety issue, okay? Where they come barreling around that corner off of Foxtrot onto Pronghorn without stopping at the stop sign. We, we, I bought that Pico 2500 to do a traffic study. We got permission to put it out, we put it out into areas where the property owners that it was placed gave us additional permission to do it, and yet, it was tampered with and removed before the study was able to be concluded. Now, this is not friendly to the community. Same thing as dumping the trash, where they dump it right next to their neighbor's property just to put it into their face, and it attracts rodents, animals, insects, that could be bringing in additional diseases, and if we learn one thing from the pandemic, that's a major issue. So, there are safety concerns. I own an environmental abatement company, so I work with CDPHE, I work with the regs in the soil, and I'm telling you, asbestos and other issues that are in the soils, right, are an issue, and when you have immunocompromised individuals, and the amount of dust that is kicked up by over 8,000 cars coming into an area that was never designed to do it. Now, again, the county permits this, we didn't. The covenants were imposed by the county, we didn't make them up. But again, these things have to be followed, they aren't followed. We are the ones put at liability and at risk. It's not like we haven't tried to work with them and say, these are concerns. Somebody's going to get killed when you add alcohol into that mix, there ain't an Uber out here or Lyft. Anybody will tell you, you drink one, and somebody's going to get by with that, come on. You guys know as well as I do, you were kids and teenagers, I'm sure we all got into bars and were able to work the system. That's going to create danger. It's not speculative, this stuff, or renders our, our points mute or invalid or irrelevant. To say that is a slap in the face, and that's what we've been getting. So, again, there's pumpkin patches in Parker, there's a pumpkin patch there, it's a safety concern, please deny the application.
Thank you, sir. Sir.
Yes, my name is Vaughn Stack, I live at 5886 Pronghorn Avenue, Elizabeth, and I want to thank you for letting us speak on this issue. I enlisted in the Marine Corps 60 years ago, and we learned very quickly at that time that we never want to, want to complain about anything within, okay, I'm sorry.
He was part of the main presentation, so I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. You were the gentleman that kind of withdrew from the group, but that's fine.
No, it was previous.
Okay. Sir, thank you, Amanda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I say, when we, when I enlisted in the Marine Corps, we learned very quickly not to complain about anything in front of our drill, drill sergeant, and his answer was always, that sounds like a personal problem. And, and then his next comment was, well, give me 25 push-ups. Well, I can't do 25 push-ups anymore, so I would just like to cite my, my complaint here. 20 years ago, I hit my mandatory retirement age, and I received a pension, a fixed pension, and I thought it'd be good enough to last the rest of my life with my wife and I. However, with inflation these last two years, it's pushed our expenditures over 50%, we've lost over 50% of our, of our purchasing, purchasing power, so. With that in mind, this brings up my personal problem here, because I can see the risk on this road with seven, when we did that last traffic count two years ago, there were 17,000 vehicle passes on Pronghorn Avenue, and as Amy pointed out here, the curves and the hills are blind. If, if someone is not favoring their right side of the road on the curves or on the hills, I can see a potential of a head-on collision, especially with alcohol, throwing alcohol in the mix. And if there were a lawsuit against us, it'd probably be a, if it's a head-on collision, it could be a high-dollar value lawsuit, and I can see the possibility of, of, of not being able to pay, definitely couldn't pay the, what the damages would be, and I, my wife and I, we would probably even have difficulty paying for the legal fees just to fight that lawsuit, it's a worry we, we have now. So, this is the main, there are other reasons, but this is the main reason I oppose this liquor license request. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And Diana, you had your name? I'll catch you next, sir.
Hi, Diana Edstrom, 10243 Private Road 106 in Elbert, I don't live anywhere near this, but listening to the comments that were made, I have a few questions. So, it sounds like a great thing to do, I understand why they're doing this, but to me, it sounds like this isn't about how it feels, it's about applying county regulations equally to all landowners in the county. How, so here are some of my questions. So, how many years has this been operating? It doesn't sound like it's the first year. Is there some type of permitting that has been required every year for this to happen? Because it almost sounds like there's more to this than just a liquor license. There's a temporary use, there's an SUR, however this land is regulated. It does not appear that the, that this, let me rephrase that. This appears to have been operating as a commercial business for a certain part of the year, they're not being taxed by the assessor's office as a commercial business, it is residential. So, there's, there's that question as to taxing and property use. I know we like to talk a lot about private property rights and, and citizens, and I think there's a balance in there between whose property rights trump whose, when you look at something like this, and you obviously have the owners in this covenant-controlled neighborhood in opposition to this, and there is a legal covenant, it appears, that does not allow this type of a business. So, again, that comes back to, excuse me, applying rules the same for everybody, no matter how you may feel about it. Now, if this does go forward, is there anybody paying for traffic control? I believe Messer Arena, when they have their events, they do have to pay for traffic control. So, again, if it's approved, and there are concerns from the residents about the speed limit, the roads, how people are driving, what is the applicant going to do to take care of something like that? If nothing else, it's a compromise, if there is approval. And I did just want to bring up two other land uses that had been in front of the commission in the past, Quail Run, I think it was Quail Run, that was the gun thing that the board turned down because of problems from the community with the operating hours, the noise, et cetera, and I, I believe that was one of the reasons that the board did turn down renewing Quail license, Quail Run's license. And then I think also Wind Spirit, which is up off of Singing Hills, they had wanted to, they had subdivided that property, there was somebody that wanted to come in and buy a piece for a commercial use, storage, I think it was, and the covenants in that subdivision did not allow that, and that was, if I remember correctly, that one was denied, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. Sir.
I am part of the group that was represented, but if I could be permitted one minute based on some things that are said subsequently, I appreciate it. So. Oh, I apologize. It's Arthur Reidel, R E I D E L, three nine seven oh five Foxtrot Circle. And I'm here with my wife Sandra Reidel. So yes, we've only lived there for three years, so half of the time the patch has been operating. And without regard to the legalities and technicalities, personally, I very much believe in live and let live and the right of any person to run their businesses, they think appropriate. And I also want to say that we're the property that was pictured on Amy's first slide. We're share a border and we're directly across from the patch. That as far as we're concerned, that Dusty and Kathy have been very good neighbors. And have been very helpful to us, you know, newbies in the neighborhood. And it really pained us to join our names in opposition, as you saw. But as far as we're concerned, adding liquor into the mix of the current situation is just one, just takes us too far. And I just turn around, I regret that we didn't have a chance to discuss this informally, you know, beforehand. We've had good discussions in the past about various things with Dusty and Kathy. It came as a surprise to us. And again, not getting into technicalities of notices and so forth. We found out very shortly before this last meeting, when we came down here, this was happening. So we didn't have a chance to discuss this informally. I don't know where we would have come out if we had had that opportunity. We didn't. But anyway, I would just flip the argument around and say, well, you know, we would only have, if their application goes well, and I hope it does for the new property, we would only have to tolerate this for one year. Well, the flip side of that argument is, one, wait a year. So it's in a, what we view would be a more appropriate place. Anyway, it pains me to take this position. I really respect the Smiths and appreciate them as neighbors, but it just feels to us like it's just taking us too far. Thank you.
Mr. Hines.
Yeah, Greg Hines, five one one three Pronghorn Avenue. We're the first house as you get onto the, onto Pronghorn. First thing I want to do is I want to clarify something, and I think Mr. Smith was unclear. And then the lady back here reiterated one drink. I don't think it's one drink. I think it's one drink per trip to the bar. Am I correct on that? Okay, so it's not one drink. You can drink a whole ton if you want.
That was a question I had.
I want to make sure that that's clear because it seemed unclear to me earlier. Adjacent to my property is one of the blind turns. It's, it's reasonably severe. I don't drive it because it's past my entrance, but it's there. It dips down and it takes a hard left as you head into, into deeper into the neighborhood. So having heard the issues of liability, that scares the hell out of me. If there's a wreck on that turn, and I think it's a high likelihood, if you throw alcohol into this mix, there'll be some accidents. I would like to know if the patch, if this goes forward, is willing to indemnify their neighbors on any wrecks that involve traffic to and from their business. That might help in the liability issue if we're indemnified and the patch steps up and says, we will defend our neighbors and our neighborhood of any litigation that may come about with an accident resulting from traffic to and from the patch. So I'd like to know if that's a possibility. As far as speculative issues on that road, they're not speculative. We sit and we watch the traffic go by between September and October every year. The dust is significant, very significant. If the wind is blowing from the south, September, October, my house is very dusty. So that is not a speculative issue at all. That, that is a fact. Something else I kind of want to bring up just to close here is Mr. Smith said, they're in the memory-making business. Parents, children making memories. Well, I find it hard to believe that alcohol helps those memories. I know personally with my children, if I was drinking, those memories have become very fuzzy compared to the ones that I wasn't drinking in. So I, I just find it odd that the memories would be clearer and better if alcohol is involved, especially during the hours of at max 10 to 6 during the day. That just does not seem like a time that alcohol needs to be involved in something that involves children. That's my piece.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Ma'am.
My, I'm Sandra Reidel. I live in the picture, three nine seven oh five Foxtrot. I'm a retired trauma orthopedic surgeon. And the, I will tell you, there is no way that alcohol is going to improve this. And a memory of it head-on would be very dangerous. We have the ability to watch the cars come down. It is like a NASCAR race or some sort of race. It is, I know the children are driving the parents crazy. Dad, get us to us fast, get faster, 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 faster. And then after the families have spent and made memories for all those, for an hour, two hours, three, whatever, they want to get home. And it is incredible. You'll have a lineup of 10, 15 cars, and I'm surprised they haven't passed each other. I do have dogs. We have horses. We have cats. I have grandchildren. And I would not go anywhere near the road during those times. We do go to the patch. It, it has been fun. But adding alcohol to a childhood memory or an adult memory. Someone brought up that maybe the gang gets together and goes and have a drink, and they go to the patch to have a drink. Nobody is going to go to the patch to meet up with buddies to have a drink. It is too expensive to get in, well worth it if you have children and so forth. But it's not going to be a hangout that people are going to go, and the determinant is going to be whether or not alcohol is served. But I will tell you, alcohol and driving do not mix. I do not think it's necessary for children to watch their parents have a better time with their alcohol there. I, I think that that is a dangerous, dangerous thing to have. A dead child or a dead person from an accident there is something, it may be speculative. It may be speculative, but I've seen it. If it happens and we can attribute to the alcohol, nobody's going to be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Do we have anybody else that wanted to speak individually? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to close public comment at this time. I guess I would ask the applicant's rep or applicant to respond to what you've heard. We may have some, we probably will take a quick recess after your response, just so we can kind of muddle through what we've heard. And we'll probably have, we'll have additional questions, but thank you.
Of course. And I'll address just a couple of things here, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Dusty here. I'm hearing a lot about the liability issues. This is a road matter, and I, I think the assumption is that people will, will be leaving the premises intoxicated and driving their car. Dusty and E B C have worked tirelessly, tirelessly, sorry, to ensure that people are not going to be intoxicated. We won't be serving intoxicated individuals. That's against the liquor code. And, and we're trying to run a well-intentioned, well-legal business here under the liquor code. And so dealing with some of these indemnification requests, you know, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we are complying with the liquor code. And if we're doing that, then there shouldn't be an issue that the patch is, is responsible for or even members of the community are responsible for in terms of liability. That's an individual who chooses to become intoxicated, you know, in their own home. They get behind a wheel. That's, that's their business. The patch has created their internal policies to prevent intoxication here. And the last part that I'll just touch on and then I'll, I'll sit down is the speculativeness in, in traffic. Speculative in nature means data, concrete facts, studies by experts. It's not things that we've perceived from your own eye unless you're an expert in the field. And so I just wanted to clarify that that's what the Supreme Court case addresses. And I, I'm happy to leave you with a couple of copies of that as well. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Dusty here to address anything else that he feels is necessary.
Thank you.
Do you want me to approach and leave you with these copies?
Dusty.
So many of the concerns around the roads, and we agree it's important to have safe roads. May I bring you something? That's actually an engineering study that was done on the roads. It was done by Cincinnati Engineering, who is a professor of engineering at the University of Colorado Boulder. He has a specialization in gravel road maintenance. If you look at the bottom of page, I believe it's five. It actually evaluates each of the three roads in the subdivision. And all of them, it also includes the recommended fixes that were done by Bajue Grading. The year before we did the Bajue Grading, there was a road committee where the first three votes from Mr. McTaggert, Mr. Hammond and Mr. Stack all voted not to do road repairs until after the season. So the road repairs were completed after that. We also contract with Bajue Grading throughout the season. Last year, they graded the road three times through the seven weeks, both before, during, and after the season. We also contracted Bajue Grading on dust mitigation at the beginning of each Saturday and Sunday. They use water, as the county had told us that they prefer not to use magnesium chloride on roads. So that has been contracted and is done again this year. I failed to mention, we actually do also contract with the sheriff's posse members. And we have two posse members on site during the weekends at the patch. We have made them aware of this application as well. So it's not just our staff, but sheriff's posse members who are there. We've also talked to them about having a mobile road sign that last year was, I'll say, in the shop and not available. This year, it should be available for us to use as well to help communicate speeds on the road. You had mentioned the covenants, and it's interesting, if, I don't know if you want to pull it back up. When we moved in, the previous owner, Kathy Green, had said the covenants were no longer active after Mrs. Ford and her husband had moved in and closed on their house. The community had decided not to keep them active. There are several items in the covenants that are no longer enforced, including the one right underneath, that bullet point of commercial businesses that says no U T Vs, go-karts, motorcycles, any of that nature will be allowed off the driveways. I can tell you, one of the neighbors has a dirt bike track in their front yard. These covenants also say that there's no cattle, no off-site animal, I mean, no additional animals that are in place, no barbed wire that many of the properties have. I believe one of the homes is, it's actually set too close compared to the covenants. The covenants say 150 feet and not 120 or 130 feet. The covenants are simply not active. So it's not that we are not aware of them. It's that they are clearly not enforced in any way, shape, or form by any of the neighbors that we're aware of. So in terms of indemnification, we can speak with our attorney and our insurance agent about that. I don't believe we will have liability. Again, you can see the road study that was done. We do contract to maintain the road and keep it in good standing. So what other questions can I address for you?
Any immediate ones? Or do you want to take a quick?
I, I'd like to take a quick break and then, because I need to kind of absorb all of this stuff. And we can say defined stuff. I, I can't do that, but there's, there's a lot of implement.
Oh.
Oh, I apologize.
I have a bad habit of talking to myself, is that, give us a few minutes to kind of think about process and procedure, and then Chris will call us back.
Yeah, so we will do a, we'll say a 10-minute recess. And I've gotten a little bit of hand-waving, but public comments closed. Folks have had their opportunity to, to speak. We're asking the applicant to respond. Please trust us to kind of pick through conflicting information if we've, we've seen it. But this is not a, a back-and-forth debate at this point. So did you have a comment you want to make before we went into recess?
I'd say in terms of the amount of alcohol that people drink, because I know that was a question, yes, it is one drink per ID.
Per trip?
Per trip. We have not discussed setting a limit. We could, generally speaking, it is priced at a point that is not, this is not turning into a club. It is not meant to come get drunk. It's meant to have one or two drinks. And it's priced in a way that keeps that from happening. That's one of the things that we had talked with a number of other farms about across the country in terms of their alcohol sales and per customer use. So it is something we've thought about, and it's a, it's not a bar.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we're in recess. We'll, we'll recon, well, we'll reconvene at 11:05. Thank you. Okay, we're, it's 11:07. We're returning from recess. So at this point, I think we kind of wrapped our heads around the questions that we feel we need to, to move forward. So to ask, I don't know. Applicant attorney, what questions do you have?
Yeah, if the applicant would like to come forward, I've got several questions.
Okay. I have a few myself.
Okay. One of the things, it's going to be very difficult to make a motion to approve this without some legal documentation. And one of the legal documentations that would be very important to me is to you present to Amanda or us, whichever is the appropriate way to do it, an executed road use agreement. And here's where my problem is, is I'm a very high believer in individual property rights. And if this road is a public, is a road with common ownership, then I feel like its use should be certified, approved. I'm not sure what the, I'm practicing law without a license here. Is that, it's very difficult for me. And, and then what I would want to see is that agreement executed, reviewed by our county attorney. So I understood the legality, the enforcement, the, the nature of it. And with that in mind, you can ask us to make a motion. But I think you would be much better off asking for a continuance and putting this documentation into place. The, the covenants, and I'm a little bit frustrated in my analysis of it because the covenants are very specific. However, the enforcement of covenants is not by the county. It's by the community itself or those that are subject to the, the covenant. So one of the things that, from a legal point of view, and again, I'm practicing law without a license, is that there's a civil matter there if the, the residents should choose to go down that avenue. And this is one of the things I need our attorney to, but the big important thing to me is the, it's a residential community, and I understand there's a business there, but the traffic account there is kind of regulated by what kind of a permit you have. For example, and I'm not, I'd have to go back and do some checking, but there's some of these permits that only allow 200 cars a, a day or something like that. So that's where I need the lawyer to look at it too, to make sure I'm not asking for something that's irrelevant. I'm, I'm a facts-based person. And that road, if I understand it correctly, is owned by each and every one of the landowners along that road. So the idea that you can use this road for something other than common residential use, I think there needs to be a road agreement. And if, and, and I think it would be in your self-interest to ask for a continuance to provide the legal documents that support your activity.
If I may, and that, I understand the ask, and that might be beyond the scope of what we're here for, for a liquor license. But if we can come back to that in a moment, I do have some specific questions that I think will be. Since you've been operating, have there been any accidents on that road from automobile accidents on that road involving a patron of your business?
Not that we are aware of. Not that we are aware of.
Okay. Have you had medical response to treat anybody that was a patron of your business? I know you have thousands of people through the year, I'm sure there have been, what?
We have, and it's part of why we do the temporary use permit and get fire department sign-off. We did have a child have a seizure, and we did call EMS, we did direct them through, and they were able to, you know, make a quick response time as needed.
Okay, and then generally, I mean, at the peak of your, what's the average number of cars that do come in, or visitors that you have? I know they may come in carloads.
Yeah, our highest count last year was around 2,700 people in the, at the day.
That's per day?
Yeah, and that's what we notate on our, I think, our temporary use permit. We anticipate around 3,500, so we generally guess high. But that's always been part of the submission to the county.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and I know just from, I mean, I appreciate the road report. We struggle throughout the county with the maintenance of our gravel roads. Generally, more than 200 vehicles a day is considered unmaintainable, and many of our county-maintained roads have far more than that, but that's generally the trigger we look at for paving, and I'm not asking for paving and just kind of making that statement. So, I understand that even with multiple trips by maintainers coming through to grade, you just can't keep up with it. I mean, we see it everywhere in the county where the grader will go through and it's going to be washboarded a day later, so, and our graders can't get everywhere every day I know you cited several places where the covenants weren't abided by in terms of fencing or off-road vehicles, et cetera. Are there any other businesses operating off these roads other than your?
Yes.
Okay. If you could, what are they?
Yes, my son has a firewood business, but I'm not in your HOA, I'm not in your covenants. There's four properties of Lone Elk Circle.
Oh, sorry, yeah, if you could.
William Hammond, 39410.
We'll need the mic for the record, though. But you've had good practice now.
William Hammond, 39410, Lone Elk Circle. Yes, my son owns a firewood business, we run it at our ranch out there, but I am one of the four properties, actually, I own two of them, Vaughn owns one of them, and Vicki and Bob Ruth own the fourth. We are not part of their HOA, we existed before the HOA, we have no covenants. We just were the reason that Pronghorn was originally built, and the HOA came in after that.
Okay, thank you. And then, I know there were some little bit of, I don't think there's an active HOA, the covenants that are filed still don't run with the land, and as Grant said, enforcement of covenants is a civil matter, not something we consider here, though we try not to put applicants for anything in a bind by allowing usage from the county for something that's otherwise may have other restrictions in another matter, because we're just, we're setting up conflict, and we do try to avoid that. I know there were some questions brought up that were more directed towards land use, and there are the types of things that would be considered in your application at the new site in terms of, you know, traffic control and that, so. But my understanding, if you could, I know, I think we met about six years ago, maybe more, when you were just starting to think about this, but could you kind of take us through how you've been operating up until now with group event permits, other processes that you've been through with the county that kind of have allowed or supported your operation up until now?
So, as you mentioned, initially when we started, or before we started the pumpkin patch, we actually did come to the county. They did look at the SUR process, they said that it did not fit that model, that was unnecessary, they said that it was a right to use. The first, I believe it was two, potentially three years, we only worked with the health department in terms of the small concession offerings that we had a couple of years, again, maybe year three, maybe year four. The county reached out and said, hey, we would like for you to go through this different process. We were told at that time that they had created a separate process for us. It was nothing that was in the regulations initially. They had talked with Douglas County and their planners on how they handle this type of business, and at that point, they'd asked us to do what they called a temporary use. I'm unsure if that's the temporary use that was prior to 2018 or 19. If they're using the same words for different things, again, because they specifically told us that they created this process just, not just for us, but we were the, kind of the justification for it.
Okay.
At that point, they'd asked for a site plan and for us to connect with, and a narrative letter similar to an SUR, and to connect with those departments that I had mentioned. Again, that includes the county clerk, Office of Emergency Management, Elizabeth Fire, Public Health, which is, again, Stacy, Public Works, and the sheriff's office. So, each year, we get a sign-off from them, we submit the plan for the year, including anticipated attendance, and we go through a review process with the county, and then they issue a permit.
Okay, no, thank you. So, just wanted to make sure I hadn't forgotten a hearing. It sounds like it was all administrative processes that were kind of outside of our purview, so I appreciate that. I guess, at the moment, the one thing, I mean, we've heard a lot today that is really issues surrounding the basic business itself and concerns about what's brought to the Some concerns, obviously, of increased risk if alcohol is brought into the mix, and I also understand the controls that you've, that you or your attorney had mentioned as well. And then, I know she provided us with some court cases that I'm sure are on point, and neither of us are attorneys, and our attorney is not available today, so quite honestly, I would like Kim to review those before we render a decision one way or the other. So, I, from my side, I would like to continue for, until our next meeting, so we have an opportunity for our attorney to look at the materials that were provided that I have no doubt are on point, but I think the process has been such that I think we owe you and the community an opportunity to have our legal review those as well and probably give us a little bit of guidance. And I know Grant had asked for something that might be a bridge too far and outside of liquor licensing, but I encourage you to, during those, this coming couple of weeks, to connect with your neighbors. I know there was one that said he hadn't had an opportunity to talk to you that would like to.
Yeah, I think you need to ask for a continuance. You can demand that we make a motion and vote. I think you can see that we're concerned about some of the underlying facts. And I know that Chris just said a bridge too far, and I don't, it may be that from a legal point of view, however, there is a common ownership of that road, and I think there should be some mutual understanding, and that'd be a way to handle this liability thing and all this other good stuff. And that would give me a lot more confidence in making a decision. Right now, I don't know how I vote. So, but it's up to you. You can request a continuance, or you can demand that we vote.
Can I just have a second with my client to step over there and discuss with him? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. So, we'll be in recess again. All right. Thank you for giving me my voice back, Amanda. Yeah, so it's 11:26, we're back in session. Ma'am, you have a?
Yeah, and thank you so much for your time today and everyone's time here today. We're going to go ahead and follow your recommendation of asking for a continuance of this hearing. I'd love to reach out to your attorney as well with the information I've provided you and open that line of communication.
Okay, and I appreciate that. We do have a, well, we have a vudish area of responsibility as commissioners.
Of course.
And if there is a legal issue at question, we don't want to blindly make a decision that may cost taxpayers money to unwind, so I think that's the right approach. And I do appreciate everybody's time here today. I know you took quite a bit of time out of your day to be here, but obviously, this is a community that cares about their community. I think that's wonderful. I think the business that is run provide, does provide, is, it's a huge positive impact on lots of families, and that's good, too. And, you know, whenever we work through one of these items for liquor license, we haven't had, this is generally the level of contention we get on land use items, and at its heart, this sort of began as land use, even though recognized that the decision we're being asked to render is simply on the liquor licensing piece. So, I think everybody's here for the absolute right reasons, and, again, kind of pains me to delay again, but I think we need to get this right for everybody, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And with that, I would.
Can I just ask one piece of clarification really quick? So, if we're continuing this hearing, does that open back up?
No, I would say, at this point, the public comment has been closed, we've taken testimony. I'm not the one that can make the motion, but the purpose of the continuance is for attorney consultation and to do some final fact-finding of what, and review of the materials that we've received.
Great, thank you.
Now, usually, a continuance is continued to a specific date.
Mm-hmm.
So, we probably need to pick a date, and you may ask it to be continued again or forgotten, whatever, but the whole point is, the typical continuance is to a specific date.
Right.
Excuse me?
The 14th of June.
Our next meeting is the 14th of June.
I think we should go to the first.
Or the 28th.
The first, okay.
Of June.
Yeah.
You prefer the 28th?
I think that's the official date, isn't it?
No.
Our next meeting?
14th is the next.
Oh, I don't think we'll be ready by the 14th.
Okay.
I would say the 28th or the first meeting in July, whichever you prefer.
When is the July date?
The 12th.
The 12th?
July 12th.
Please say again, sir.
The, the 20.
28th.
28th of June.
Yep.
Yes. That would be at 9 o'clock, yes. I would accept a motion to continue this hearing until the 28th of June at 9:00 a.m.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move the, continue the public hearing for a new liquor license for the patch in Elizabeth until June 28 at 9:00 a.m.
At this location, yeah. At the same location.
Oh, yeah, at this location.
Okay, I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to continue this hearing to June 28 at 9:00 a.m. at this location. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'd accept a motion to close hearing on this item at this time.
One more. I move we close the hearing on the new liquor license for the patch in Elizabeth. I move we close.
I'll second. Now, we have a motion and a second to close.
Aye.
Yeah, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, already, and we'll, I won't formally recess, we'll just wait for our third commissioner to return, and appreciate everybody's attendance. I was hoping we would resolve today, but I think it's wise that we do break. Thank you.
Are we ready to continue?
All righty, we're, actually, we're back live and streaming, so, thank you, sir. All righty, so it is 11:36 and we're back, and just if the record could reflect, Commissioner Schroeder has rejoined the meeting. We have three remaining action items, all are related to dissolving taxing entities, which is always a good thing, and it's a shame the crowd left, because this is something I think everybody could agree on, that fewer taxing entities is a better thing, so. With that, I'd accept a motion to dissolve the Meadow Station Public Improvement District.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to dissolve the Meadow Station Public Improvement District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to dissolve the Meadow Station P I D. Is there any discussion? Okay, saying now, just one quick comment on this and all, and the next three, all were related to road construction projects that were being paid for out of tax proceeds from the local community. Those projects were completed years ago, the payment for the loans has, have been zeroed out, as the resolution states, the treasurers confirm, there's no outstanding liabilities and there's no intent to collect future taxes, so that's why we're dissolving these. But we have a motion and a second to dissolve the Meadow Station P I D. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Next, we have a motion to dissolve the Foxwood Estates P I D.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution to dissolve the Foxwood P I D.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to dissolve the Foxwood P I D. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. And the final, and I think that Chaparral was actually a local improvement district, but different mechanism that levies versus a strict property tax based on value, it's the L I Ds where in Chaparral was a set amount per residence, but again, it's all been paid off, so. I would accept a resolution to dissolve the Chaparral Local Improvement District.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the resolution TBD to dissolve the Chaparral L I D.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to dissolve the Chaparral L I D. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. I believe we've got a pretty healthy break before the next meeting, so we'll discuss agenda items at our next agenda meeting, and then we do have land use at 1:00 p.m., one application, the Old Saw Mill Ranch rezoned, so it's 11:39, we're in recess, we'll reconvene at 1:00 p.m. for that land use application. Thank you.